Tom Salkers will follow with Fred. Please stand, remove your hats, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
It's about our heads. Almighty and most merciful God, we come together now and before you and give you thanks for the abundance of blessings that you've showered upon us. Too many times we take for granted what a great country we live in, what a great community we live in. We sin against you daily and we just ask your forgiveness. Lord, we ask your blessing on this meeting, on this organization and this community. Be with all of us in this room and be with all of those who are traveling. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I'd ask Tom Salkers, please have a roll call.
I just ask if there's an, can we agree that Lane Fryberger is the only member not present?
I think Lane is here.
Lane's right up there.
I mean, uh... I would welcome Urban Day to his first plan commission meeting.
We do have a forum so we can't conduct business. Minutes that were sent out, they were fairly lengthy from the last meeting. If you've had a chance to review it, or I'll ask you what you want to do. You want to review them as they were written, that you looked at them? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If there are not, I will take a motion to approve it.
I'll make the motion to approve the answer.
All right, Lane Fryberger has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim Day has made a second. It's open for discussion. Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Okay, hold business. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to this Plan Commission meeting for the March 4th. I will tell you that while we will be having, we will be having a regular Plan Commission meeting from now till seven thirty. And at seven thirty, as it was advertised, we'll be suspending rules of the Plan Commission's regular meeting and be conducting a public hearing for the proposed ordinance. If you are here to speak on that ordinance, I wish that you would come to the front, sign your name and your address on the list, and we'll take you accordingly as you have signed up for your public comments. So at this time, first of all, I'd like, I'd like to have Urban Day be welcomed here as the new seating of the commissioners appointment to the Plan Commission. Is Gary in calling Berenger here?
No. I got a call from Gary an hour, couple hours ago soon that would not be here.
All right.
An emergency call.
Okay. New business. Jason Huckleberry has sent, this is a preliminary with Indiana Department of Environmental Management. This is a CFO application packet. This is an existing farm that is on sixty-four twenty-seven East New Philadelphia Road, Salem, Indiana, in Washington County Franklin Township. It is existing operations since nineteen eighty-six without current CFO approval due to transfer of property owners, forty thousand turkeys through existing forty five hundred farms, compost or often removed from property at clean out time. And it's, basically, I don't know if the permit had expired by the previous owner, but he resubmitted paperwork to IDM as being the new owner for the existing buildings. And I talked to Jason on February eighteenth, and this was a, as a procedure to, to acknowledge that permit. I do have a map, and I think that Travis has looked at it and has got the number of feet distances in there. It is an existing facility. If anybody wanted to look at the paperwork, I don't think that we have any action that we need to take. How long do you think?
When, were operations ceased, terminated, or is it, are operations ongoing? This is a transfer of ownership.
This is a transfer of ownership. And I guess he went ahead and applied for permit on the farm.
Okay. Are the operations ongoing currently under the existing owner, or have they terminated?
They have terminated as on the previous owner, but Jason has taken over the ownership.
Do you know when they terminated?
Is anything on this paperwork there?
I don't see anything.
Is Jason here?
Is Jason Huckleberry in either? I don't see. What, what are you saying about this?
I'm just inquiring what, how long it's been since our operations. Is this, is this just a temporary termination and sale, or has this been closed down for several years?
I don't think it's been closed down. All right.
If it's, if it's been less than a couple of years, I think you have.
Approve it, okay. Well, basically, it'll be like a grandfather with the existing facility. Do I have a motion in to approve? I'll let you, I have a chance to take a look at it first. We got some time before public hearing. Did you pull it up on the maps?
No, I didn't have a map, but it said, I think it's a transfer motion. Eight of the applications, two thirteen thirteen this year.
Yes.
If it's grandfathered in, we have, we can approve it, but if it's not grandfathered in, then it's a different situation.
Basically, there are new rules we're about to adopt, and it's all the current ordinance anyway.
Yeah.
Assuming they get adopted, but until that happens, you know, there's a seven hundred fifty to set back that this operation was grandfathered in, and so that doesn't apply that since it's going to change. And if, if it's operated, they've operated three of the last five, in the last five years, three of the years within operations ongoing, then I can't decline it, but if you wanted to, anyway, you could accept. Given that there's, there was grandfathered at times, and he's already got some purchase and everything and all that.
You want to check it till next meeting? Instead of find out some more information?
I think we should. I think we should. And the thing is, depending on what this commission's recommendation is on the, on this ordinance, this may be unimportant.
Right.
See? Because he meets the requirements.
Let me, let me have to this side. I mean, that would be the safest place for us to go. Travis, did you actually have a chance to physically, or did you pull up down the map and pull the D up on it?
I just did it off the map.
All right.
Do you need a vote on that paper?
We need to vote to table it.
Unless you just want to write, Mrs. Urban is very informed regardless.
I really think that we probably ought to look at, get some more information on it.
See, have on, have the billings have been shut out for two or three years or something? That's their story.
Yeah.
Need to know what they shared.
We need to know that.
All right.
I'll make the motion to table it.
All right.
I'll say it.
Lane Fryberger has made a motion to table it, and it's got on it, has seconded it. It's open for discussion. I think it'd probably be best if we pursue it, find out a little bit more information, especially a past operation, you know, might take a look and review, you know, some stuff on it, so. Lay it up there to the next Plan Commission meeting, and they...
Needs an operation.
Yeah. All right. Take it to a vote, to, to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Be tabled till the April Plan Commission meeting. All right. We have twenty minutes before we are advertised public hearing. Is there any, a body that has anything to direct just for the Plan Commission as far as order of business? Or you want to public comment? I see several people here. Tom, are we...
Remind them that if you want to speak, please sign in, because when we start the public hearing, I'm going to be retrieving that signup sheet where it, where it go.
Okay, I see.
And giving it to President Hor, and that'll be the list that we go from, and only the people on the list will be called upon to speak in the public hearing. So if you're inclined at all to speak, please sign up.
Do you have to speak if you sign up?
No.
No.
You can pass or defer your time.
Yeah. And, and you know, the suggestion is, is that if there's a group of people that have a common theme of interest or, you know, of, of points, if you sign up on that and you're talking for a few people, we can allow a certain amount more time. We want to try to be expedient as far as going with this meeting. And here at the Plan Commission, we're going to vote on either have a three or a five-minute timetable for you to present your remarks on that, so. But if you're talking for more than just yourself and you've got a common theme for some other people, where three or four people don't have to come up and speak on the same things, we just don't want a bunch of redundancy in there. But if you're speaking of a common theme for somebody, we can allow some more time for comments, or they can give you your, their time.
Also, if there are people standing outside who are here for the public hearing, we would ask that everybody, we want to make room so that everybody can be present in the room for the public hearing.
There are some chairs up here if you want to pull them around. All right. It's order for discussion here. We have, you know, as the people come up and speak and stuff, there's not a time that we all have to allow them to speak. We have had, you know, one of the rules of order and stuff, you know, for like the parcels of ground and stuff, from three to five minutes. Do we want to designate a time?
No.
Have a timekeeper for that?
There aren't many people signed up.
You have ten.
So, I mean, we got plenty of room for five minutes for everybody.
All right.
I mean, if we have thirty people sign up, then we can't.
All right. Well, I'd like to take that as a motion here to allow the five-minute speaking time. Do I have a motion for the speaking time? Philip Marshall has made a motion for a five-minute speaking time. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim Adey has made the second. Got your name this time, Jim. So, it's open for discussion. Your name?
I would say fifteen people max. If more than that sign up, then we need to reduce the time.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. If we see that we have fifteen, then we'll reduce it to three. Will you take that as amendment there?
Yes, sir.
Will you take that as amendment, Phil? Okay. So we'll go back to the original motion with those amendments with that. Any more discussion? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, five-minute time for speaking, three minutes if it's up above fifteen for the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, same. Motion carried. Two more people. If, the people that just come in, if you're wanting to speak, we've got to sign up up here in the front. Now, you're not, if you don't want to speak, you want to sign up, and we, we're not going to allow you to speak unless you do sign up. So if you want to speak, please come up and put your name up here and your address.
The most important thing that you left out is just because you've signed your name doesn't mean you have to speak.
Yeah.
If you might want to speak.
Yeah.
Put your name down, and then you can also yield your time to someone else.
We got a question about, somebody says they have to sign up to speak, asking what do you talk about, or what do you mean?
Well, this is basically a public comment. It won't be addressing back to the crowd to speak. You're basically speaking on the ordinance itself and to the Plan Commission. This is not going to be a question back for somebody of remarks in the crowd. All right. Good. Philip Marshall has brought up that what we are basically doing is that we're having a public hearing on the ordinance that's proposed in on land use. And the procedure will, is that this is the first. Maybe we will have a second, and most likely we will have a second public hearing on this draft ordinance. And if you have not seen the draft ordinance at this time, there's a few more copies of it up here on the front desk here. And basically, if you have read it, you have remarks about the ordinance that you want to present to the Plan Commission for review, then this is your opportunity to do that. Afterwards, when we, after we do a couple of public hearings, get the language stays, you know, then with the Plan Commission, we'll make a vote whether to send it to the commissioners, either approving, disapproving, or no opinion. And it goes to the commissioners. The commissioners, at the time that they receive the ordinance, they can make their own decision on whether to go ahead and help public comments themselves. Now, they can have a public hearings themselves, one, two, or however many they want. After that, then they will make a decision whether to approve the ordinance or disapprove the ordinance. But finally, we are, as a Plan Commission, are an advisory council to the commissioners, so we are making an advisement to the commissioners of, of the zoning ordinance. Now, we've had a subcommittee that's worked diligently on this, and we've basically been on it for about a year, right? To this point, not totally on this project, but on the subdivision of ordinance, and then also on this particular land use ordinance. But anyway, we're to the point for public comment right now. Is there anything I need to add to that?
There, the commissioners are to take it up at their first regularly scheduled meeting, but they have to do so in compliance with the open door law, and it has to be an item on the agenda. And if the commission were to make a favorable recommendation this evening, I can tell you that this is not on the commissioner's agenda for tomorrow morning. It shouldn't be, I don't. And so therefore, the first meeting that we could meet that requirement would be the second Tuesday, or the, the second meeting of the month, which is the third Tuesday, and I'm not sure what date that is. And that's only if the Plan Commission were to vote to send this to the, to adopt this ordinance, to send to the county commissioners with a favorable recommendation. And then finally, they do have ninety days to act on it, from the time that a vote's taken to send it to them. So, so there's only a ninety-day window for them to act on it.
Then Jim Day did tell me today in a phone call conversation that there's a possibility of three Plan Commission members to be gone at our regular scheduled April meeting. And my suggestion is, is that I checked with the city, and this room is available, is available on April the ninth, which is a Tuesday afterwards, April the ninth, because that's work with everybody else's schedule. I prefer to have as many members here as possible. Does that work? We want to have a motion to...
You're talking about it for our regular meeting?
Yes.
Public hearing?
Have a motion to change it from April one to April the ninth. Philip Marshall's made a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Jeff Sallard has made a second. It's open for discussion. Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor of changing the regularly scheduled April meeting from April one to April ninth? You'll still be here at City Hall at seven o'clock, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So April ninth will be our April meeting.
It, it's been...
It is, I checked.
What, you are checked?
I already checked.
David, you made the motion in second.
I made the motion in second.
All right. We are obligated to not start until seven thirty because it is being advertised and posted that way.
President Hor, I have, I'd like to ask some questions.
All right.
I have three questions that I'm going to ask our audience that's assembled, just in general terms, and don't feel yourself bound to your answer to this. I'll tell you what the three questions are going to be, and then I'd like to see a show of hands as a result of what the three questions are. Three questions. Question one. Have, regarding the proposed language of the proposed ordinance, I have not read it, or having read it, I don't know how I feel about the language of the proposed ordinance. That's question one. Question two. Are you opposed to the proposed language of the proposed ordinance as being too restrictive, imposing on the property rights of property owners? Or question number three. Are you opposed to the proposed language of the proposed ordinance as being not restrictive enough that we need more distance and larger buffers between residences and CFOs and KFOs? Now, that's my three questions. Number one, basically, I really don't know how I feel about the language of the proposed ordinance. Number two, I'm opposed because it's too restrictive on property rights of property owners. Number three, I'm opposed because it's not restrictive enough, and we need more distance and larger buffers. Question one. I really don't know how I feel about the language of the proposed ordinance, or I've not read it. Okay? Fair enough. Question two. Are you opposed to the proposed language of the proposed ordinance because it is too restrictive and imposes on the property rights of property owners? Okay. Question number three. Are you opposed to the proposed language as not restrictive enough that we need more distance and larger buffers between residences and CFOs and KFOs? Okay. I want you folks that just had your hands up on question number three to realize that a no vote does not give you what you want. A no vote gives the previous question what it wants. Just so that you understand.
Okay. We will be in, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back and we'll start the public hearing.
And again, when we start it, I want to make sure that everyone who wants to attend, there are seats up here where you can sit, we can move chairs, you can move to that side of the table, we can create another row, but I don't want, I don't want anyone to feel like they couldn't attend the public hearing because they were out there. Another thing to keep in mind is if you feel like you're going to want to rebut something that someone else in the audience said, you need to sign up.
At this time...
Mr. President Hor, I'd just like to make one quick announcement for everybody's information here. Two months ago, there were more people here that said we needed more restrictive language. Two months ago. A lot more people here.
So at this time, if you have signed up on this, uh, we're gonna give, uh, five minutes, uh, for every person that has signed up, because we are below fifteen, uh, to make remarks on the ordinance. And please address the plant commission and, uh, and anything pertaining to the ordinance. If, if, if I see that you're swinging away from the ordinance, I will call you to come back to your train of thought, back toward the ordinance.
President Horrigan-
Yes.
If I may interject, I want to remind everyone to turn on the microphones, and also, one last time, now that the public hearing's started, I want to make sure that everyone who's here for the public hearing comes into the room, and I want to announce there's available seating, there's, I see an empty seat there, and then we've got several seats up here, so, I want to make sure that everybody's able to and does come into the room for the public hearing.
At this time, the first one on order is Rhonda Green.
Rhonda Green, uh, one zero one three zero, West, or, yeah, West Suter Lane, Campbell's burg, Indiana. Um, I would like to see the ordinance, uh, go ahead and encompass building size. I know right now it doesn't, and it just, uh, addresses the number of birds, but I'd like to see anything over fifteen thousand square feet get to, you know, be under this or, you know, have to come before the board to get a waiver. I think a lot of what happens with, uh, a building of this size, an industrial building like this, um, when it's planted next to a neighbor, I think that's where a lot of the turmoil comes in. Is you have this five hundred foot long building next to your house, it can't be good. I mean, you know, that's what people think. I'd also like to see the, um, the setback be seven hundred and fifty feet with the ability to have a waiver from your neighbor. You know, instead of just moving into, uh, uh, a neighborhood and being able to plant it like twenty feet from a property line or anything similar of that nature, I'd like the ability to have seven, at least seven hundred and fifty feet, just like the, the ordinance before, but have the ability to have your neighbor go ahead and say, well, I don't care, it doesn't matter to me, I'm gonna give you a waiver so that you can put it wherever you want to on this property. That will do more to, uh, keep people from sowing each other than a reciprocal setback or any other, like, contraption that you guys can think of.
Yes.
Is to go ahead and have permission from your neighbor or have acknowledgement from your neighbor in a legitimate way. Okay, see, that's what I would like to see. Are there any questions?
You're not asking for a setback then, Rhonda, you're asking for-
A seven hundred and fifty foot setback from your nearest house, but with the ability to have a waiver from your neighbor, which is already built into that anyway. Okay? So, you know, at least have the setback be longer than the building itself, and also the fifteen, have it attached to the size of the building. So anything over fifteen thousand square feet has to get a, uh, waiver or has to be brought before the board, or, or if it's not in the right location, if it does need to have a waiver from the neighbor. Okay? So, uh, but, you know, once again, try to get it back into the community where people have to talk to each other to have this set in. Okay? You can, you know, put a reciprocal on it, and that just abuses the neighbor. I know that that's been taken off the table, but, you know, I don't want it sneaking in. Okay? Seven hundred and fifty feet with the, the ability to have a waiver from your neighbor and have the ordinance attached to building size, anything over fifteen thousand square feet. That's my, my contribution, whether you follow it or not, but that's what I'd like to see.
This is a public hearing.
Well, and, I'm sorry, what about the first suggestion you had about building size? Are you talking about confined feeding operations or anything?
Right, the building, uh, for like a, a poultry KFO is usually what, forty, forty feet by five hundred?
If, if you're barely on the CFO.
So take it down to fifteen thousand square feet. Take it down to fifteen thousand square feet. If there's a problem, it can come before the board. Right now, it's not attached to building size. Some KFOs are not regulated because they have fewer number of birds, okay? They have under the eighteen thousand bird limit. Bring it forward and attach it to the building size. This has been brought forward before this board before, over the last year, several times. If you have it attached to building size, which is in a lot of ways what most people are afraid of anyway, you know, attach it to building size. Fifteen thousand square feet and above needs to be looked at. Okay? Not attach it just to the bird number, or, you know, what have you, but have it attached to the building size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Max Green.
My name's Max Green, I live one zero one three zero, West Suter Lane, Campbell'sburg, Indiana. Um, I would like to see the ordinance, uh, go ahead and encompass building size. I know right now it doesn't, and it just, uh, addresses the number of birds, but I'd like to see anything over fifteen thousand square feet get to, you know, be under this or, you know, have to come before the board to get a waiver. I think a lot of what happens with, uh, a building of this size, an industrial building like this, um, when it's planted next to a neighbor, I think that's where a lot of the turmoil comes in. Is you have this five hundred foot long building next to your house, it can't be good. I mean, you know, that's what people think. I'd also like to see the, um, the setback be seven hundred and fifty feet with the ability to have a waiver from your neighbor. You know, instead of just moving into, uh, uh, a neighborhood and being able to plant it like twenty feet from a property line or anything similar of that nature, I'd like the ability to have seven, at least seven hundred and fifty feet, just like the, the ordinance before, but have the ability to have your neighbor go ahead and say, well, I don't care, it doesn't matter to me, I'm gonna give you a waiver so that you can put it wherever you want to on this property. That will do more to, uh, keep people from sowing each other than a reciprocal setback or any other, like, contraption that you guys can think of.
Yes.
Is to go ahead and have permission from your neighbor or have acknowledgement from your neighbor in a legitimate way. Okay, see, that's what I would like to see. Are there any questions?
You're not asking for a setback then, Rhonda, you're asking for-
A seven hundred and fifty foot setback from your nearest house, but with the ability to have a waiver from your neighbor, which is already built into that anyway. Okay? So, you know, at least have the setback be longer than the building itself, and also the fifteen, have it attached to the size of the building. So anything over fifteen thousand square feet has to get a, uh, waiver or has to be brought before the board, or, or if it's not in the right location, if it does need to have a waiver from the neighbor. Okay? So, uh, but, you know, once again, try to get it back into the community where people have to talk to each other to have this set in. Okay? You can, you know, put a reciprocal on it, and that just abuses the neighbor. I know that that's been taken off the table, but, you know, I don't want it sneaking in. Okay? Seven hundred and fifty feet with the, the ability to have a waiver from your neighbor and have the ordinance attached to building size, anything over fifteen thousand square feet. That's my, my contribution, whether you follow it or not, but that's what I'd like to see.
This is a public hearing.
Well, and, I'm sorry, what about the first suggestion you had about building size? Are you talking about confined feeding operations or anything?
Right, the building, uh, for like a, a poultry KFO is usually what, forty, forty feet by five hundred?
If, if you're barely on the CFO.
So take it down to fifteen thousand square feet. Take it down to fifteen thousand square feet. If there's a problem, it can come before the board. Right now, it's not attached to building size. Some KFOs are not regulated because they have fewer number of birds, okay? They have under the eighteen thousand bird limit. Bring it forward and attach it to the building size. This has been brought forward before this board before, over the last year, several times. If you have it attached to building size, which is in a lot of ways what most people are afraid of anyway, you know, attach it to building size. Fifteen thousand square feet and above needs to be looked at. Okay? Not attach it just to the bird number, or, you know, what have you, but have it attached to the building size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Max Green.
My name's Max Green, I live one zero one three zero, West Suter Lane, Campbell'sburg, Indiana. Uh, part of my, uh, explanation here comes in, let me explain the vote that we're gonna take while it goes. Uh, my concern is, uh, uh, we've stated that we're gonna go forward with, uh, uh, looking at housing and, uh, uh, mobile home parks, and as we do those, there're gonna be most likely some kind of restriction from the road, thirty, forty foot from the road and thirty or forty foot from the property line. Yet at the same time, you can build a fifteen, twenty thousand square foot building and put five foot in the property line and five foot in the road ditch. There need to be at least some kind of minimal regulations put on, if you're gonna do it to all the homeowners and say, because you're building this nine hundred square foot house, you have to be x far from the, the property line, you need to, uh, at least consider that for the same thing for the houses that can be built for birds that are less than the numbers required right now. Because, uh, uh, for example, Jimmy Elgin had, uh, Tyson houses where he raised the hymns for like six months instead of the broilers, and the, the numbers were less than the thirty thousand threshold, therefore, those two buildings could still be built today with, uh, five foot from the property line and five foot from the road, uh, no regulation whatsoever. That's, that's a concern with that. I do, uh, uh, appreciate that the reciprocal has been taken back and, uh, that everybody is being considered equal. If I want, my kids want to build, uh, animal feeding operations, they have to comply with the same distance regulations everybody else does. And same thing for when it comes to a house, compare a house to a house and a building to a building on your own property line. Thank you.
Ian Green.
I am Ian Green, uh, if I can remember correctly.
One, one zero one three six.
Yeah.
West Suter Lane.
Yes, uh, and I would like to, um, address some wording in the, uh, copies gave out. According to, uh, section three hundred, there is supposed to be an official zoning map on appendix A, which is also attached, but I do not see one. I was wondering why that is.
There are, there are, there is a map, and basically, the map is the two mile fringe around Salem in the, um-
Can I show it on the screen?
Yes, we're gonna show it up on the screen.
Well, well, I don't want to cut into Ian's time, but someone approached me, uh, beforehand, and this might be a good time to kind of clarify that when we showed this map, that the areas that are, are shown where there are incorporated towns and cities and/or other areas that already have zoning, um, those that don't have zoning but are incorporated cities or towns are blocked out and marked as residential areas. Okay? This, what we have before us, only if, is the confined feeding, or, is the-
You know, I haven't-
Agricultural, agricultural zoning ordinance, it, it only applies in the, um, rural areas, agricultural.
I'll put a whole disc out. Alright.
Can we just pass this to you?
Yeah. This is the map, basically, city of Salem is in the center, and it has a two mile fringe where their zoning ordinance, we do not preclude or supersede that. And then there's another incorporated town with zoning, and that's the town of Lymonia has zoning, but they have not encompassed the two mile fringe like Salem. So Lymonia is put here, the green ones are, uh, South Tillo, Campbell'sburg, uh, Little York, Pekin, um, Fredericksburg, Harden'sburg, what was this one down here?
Mark'sburg.
Mark'sburg, Mark'sburg. It are classified as residential, in the green. All the rest of the areas are designated agriculture.
Those areas residential aren't affected.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm going to draw you back to my original question as, which was, why it wasn't included in the copies that you handed out.
Was, this was Farm Bureau's, uh, uh, extra copies of the media that they had.
And nor are they not allowed to have copies of this map?
It's not, it's not, I don't know if they not-
Mine's got, mine's got.
Now, mine does too, and what's been posted?
Mine's got.
You're on- Now, wait a minute, I'm not sure, um, one sent out online does not, but my understanding is, I don't know if the one you have at your office had it or not, but the individual approached me saying, I think you went to the wrong location anyway, but-
Alright.
But if, if the one online didn't, then that was an error, and that was my, someone in my office other than me who forwarded those by email saying attached is, and, um, then I, then that's my error.
All the copies that are best spread at different points here in the city, I think have got the maps on.
The one in the library, does the one in the library have the map? I mean, you know, because you're supposed to have it ten days before the meeting.
I got mine from Highway Department today, it had.
So that should be the same at the library too.
Okay, I mean-
The hard copies are, it's electronic copies, they look like they don't have.
And that's the, that's the risk you run when you try to be more informative than required in the law, we're required to put it in one place, and, you know, we decided at the last meeting, we're like, hey, let's put it here and there, and let's give it to Rhonda, put it on her website, we'll put it on the county's website. All those things aren't required, but we designated three physical locations and two online locations for people's convenience. And certainly, I can tell you that I never received a single phone call from anyone advising that, hey, I looked this up and there's no map attached, can I have the map? This was up more than the ten days, this was distributed more than the ten days required to be posted, and at no point did anyone call and say, hey, and it was clear at the last meeting that I was sending this out, no one said, hey, that, that's not attached. So, um, if, if you, if you hadn't come across that, if you had a question, I'd be happy to give it to you. It's my understanding that physical locations do have it. I did not run around and check, so, why I didn't, it would be, I guess it wasn't attached when Beth sent the email out, so I, I can't say.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Alright. Anything else on that? Uh, we do need to, if we have next, uh, public, uh, comment, is there, make sure that that map is attached and those electronic maps. Gene Thompson.
My name's Gene Thompson, I, I live at one one five nine five, West Lost River Road, Campbell'sburg. Um, I wanted to make comments on the non-conforming use section four hundred-
Okay.
-as it pertains to existing buildings. Um, how can you encompass existing buildings into this new proposed ordinance and, and, and tie those two together? I mean, there's, there's buildings that get hit by tornadoes, fires, uh, snowfall could cause a building to collapse, and these buildings were built back when the stipulations were at, at different distances, according to IDIM rules. Uh, to encompass them into this new ordinance would be totally out of whack, in my opinion. I mean, people's got millions of dollars invested in some of these KFOs, and for you to pass an ordinance saying you had something happen to your farm and you can't rebuild now because this new ordinance would, would bankrupt you. I mean, most of the poultry buildings built in Washington County are to IDIM's standards as far as setback distances. Uh, going forward, you can make stipulations toward that and, and, uh, possibly get approval with people, but not with existing buildings. I mean, people would be out of business and lose their farms or their way of life and everything.
The main thing he's talking about, I think, or if you, remind me if I'm wrong, but it says in, in the ordinance that, that anything that exceeds sixty percent of gross square footage, the owner must apply to reapply, so that's, that's the main thing they're talking, hundred sixty percent, you can do whatever you want, go ahead and rebuild it.
Exactly.
Over the sixty percent, then that's what you're talking about.
Yes, yes.
Am, am I going to go astray?
I, I think so, and I've had some comments, I reviewed the language in there, and I understand some, and the, I don't think that was the intentions of this four oh one.
The numbers we've got is that's somewhere close to a quarter million dollars a year. So total economic impact just for Tyson and, and our producers here in Washington County is well over $23 million a year. I would, I don't, you know, as far as Washington County itself, I'd say that would rank up pretty high as far as any business that operates in the county as far as economic impact. Our growers, Washington County growers have a good track record with IDIM. All that's public record can be, can be reviewed. We have field technicians that come through a couple of times a week, visits our producers here in Washington County. While we're looking at chickens, we also look at how they're performing environmentally, making sure they're doing things right. Our people are trained on what IDIM expects and then just basically what they would expect if, if they were a neighbor to this producer. Couple of questions that I had and Gene asked one of them, as far as the 60% rule there on an existing facility. Two questions I've got, if one of our existing producers decides to sell their facility, I think we were, some of that was being discussed earlier. And it was built to IDIM rules currently or the past. And a new ordinance takes effect similar to what we've got now. Can that producer sell his farm if it doesn't meet the new regs or the new ordinance? Another question we've got is, again, if it doesn't meet the new ordinance or a ordinance that continues to grow in the future, if they want to transfer this farm to their children, how will that work? You know, Tyson Foods, we support our producers and, you know, we, we support agriculture in Washington County. Where we participate in 4H Fair each year. We, you know, ag is, ag I think would be, you know, with us, part of that is the biggest economic driver of Washington County. And when you start putting ordinances in place and start restricting what you can do and what you can't do with your own property, I think that puts that at risk in the future. What we ask Tyson Foods, what we ask is, from, from talking individually to some of you, what is driving this is the farms that don't meet the CFO criteria for setbacks. Tyson Foods would support the idea of farms that do not meet the CFO setbacks with IDIM. Apply those same setbacks to them. New operations that we build that are less than 30,000, we could support that 100%. We don't see a problem with that. So again, you know, we, we impact your county by $23 million a year. We're proud to be here, we're proud to be a neighbor here in Washington County. And we're proud of our producers, which we have a lot here tonight, so. So would ask you to think about parts of this, if any, anyone on board would like to call me later, be glad to talk to you or whatever, but we do appreciate the opportunity to come to speak tonight and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
One was your first.
David?
No.
Oh, sorry.
You have $17 million?
Uh, $17 million in corn purchases.
Corn purchases?
Yes, sir.
First, first that you made.
And then $6 million to our local farmers, Washington County farmers, annual income.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon Purley?
Sharon Purley, 7958 South Big Spring Road, Pekin, Indiana.
You can go ahead, Sharon.
I'm not a public speaker as such or a politician, but I've been very, very concerned about comments that I've read about, you know, from different people about the operations in the areas. A few years back, my son had the opportunity to buy some existing buildings down off of 135. I think probably he and his cousin Matt Purley were, Steven Purley and Matt Purley were among the first, some of the first in the county to actually buy some buildings and start the Tyson operation. I may be wrong about that, I'm not sure about the dates. It was a big investment for young people like they were at that time. I know Steven talked with me and his dad a lot about it. And of course, we've dairy farmed a lot of our lives and if you know anything about farming, you know it's never been a profitable business. And so after much soul searching and prayer, they decided to go ahead with the purchases, which proved to be a good decision for them. Later he and Matt split up and then Matt owns all of the one existing buildings now and Steven bought two more, built two more. My son-in-law and daughter put up new turkey houses about four years ago and it was good for them also. It's been profitable. And I can't say that about the dairy farm at this time. But anyway, and I, I'm concerned about affect on neighbors. I live close to my son and in-law and daughter and I can say that I, I've never had any problem with smell or odors of any kind. And I think if these farmers take care of their buildings right, there should be no problems. They have the rules, they have the guidelines, they have things at their disposal that can help them with this. And I would just like to ask all people concerned about this to think about if they would be keeping, like some younger people or anybody from actually making a living. And I think there maybe should be a difference between people who have actually owned land for many years like we have. And they decide they would like to put up these operations and maybe somebody coming in even from outside the county and buying land cheap and maybe putting some up somewhere without first consulting with neighbors around them or the county or anybody else. But I don't know if anybody is making, you know, am I making sense about what I'm saying? But it has been a good investment for us and we try to be good neighbors. And I think my son and Matt and my son-in-law have worked very hard. If somebody thinks they're going to come into county and make a lot of money with either chickens or turkeys and it's not much work, all I can say is they have better faith twice than I do and is not easy.
Thank you, Sharon. One question for Sharon. Uh, can Van, is that Van? On Rutherford Hall? Oh, Bear, that looks like Van.
Hey, I got a signature of that.
That looks like Van, it's not even.
Well, we'll get it right now.
All right, Kevin Bear.
My name's Kevin Bear, 5444 North Rutherford Hall Road, Scottsburg, I do live in Washington County. I'm passing around to all, all members up there, if I don't have enough, I do have some more back there of what my comments are going to be here tonight, so you'll have a little bit of idea of what I'm talking about. But I'll kind of, just kind of read through what I have here. My name's Kevin Bear, my, my family owns a cornucopia farm. We raise fruits, vegetables, goats, cattle, as well as corn and soybeans. I appreciate the time that this group has spent with this draft proposal with the ordinance. Would like to briefly address a few concerns that we have regarding, regarding the ordinance. Section 401, does this section or any other section apply to only CFOs or other farming operations as well? Either way, it seems a burden on farming operations that is hit by, if they're hit by fire or natural disaster to lose income producing buildings just because the damage is 60%, more than 60%. Speaking from personal experience, we lost about 2/3 of a barn in tornado as well as home damage in 2010. This barn is important to our operation and family business and we actually built it back better than it was before. We think that if buildings are currently being used for agriculture purpose, there should be not a question of whether they can be rebuilt. If a farmer wants to increase the size of a building or change the use, it does not fall within the stated setback, then the application to the BZA would be in order. Section 500. We'd like clarification on paragraph that begins, or more, animals for food, fur or recreation. I guess, I may have this, I may have figured the answer out to this, but I'm going to go ahead and ask, does this mean for numbers of those that's stated in the list, for example, 251 dairy cows? Et cetera.
Yes, the or should probably not be capitalized because it's a continuation of the sentence stars before that list. Confined feeding operations or CFOs shall be defined for purposes of this ordinance as grazing of zealous or more animals.
Got it. I'll pass that along to my bookkeeper. Section 701 and 701 dot point 2.4. The last sentence in 701 ends with promoted equally for all property owners. Yet in 701 point 2.4, a CFO must be at least 200 feet from the closest point along a property lines, whereas no mention is made how far a residence may be built from the property line. If we are to be equal, then the residential owners neighboring farmland should not be allowed to build within 200 feet of the property line. This could be avoided if the two neighboring owners mutually agree in writing that structures could be erected closer than 200 feet from the property line. This agreement could be attached to DW, that was in the ordinance as well. In a recent meeting that we attended, Greg Schleifer from Indiana Farm Bureau Livestock Specialist commented that without reciprocal protection, some counties residents were going in, getting building permits to build close to a property line and then not following through with the building just to make the farmer or landowner have to build further away or not be able to build at all. If a property owner applies for permits, they must, I, this is something we, my family, we talked about. If a property owner applies for permits, they must start building within 30 days or the permit would be null and void. One more comment, agriculture is and always has been our largest industry in the county. Ag pays for much of our infrastructure, our schools that educate our children, employs many people. According to the Indiana Soybean Alliance, for every $1 paid in property tax by agriculture, it only costs 20 cents to service agriculture. For every dollar paid by taxes, by businesses, it costs 60 cents to, for that same infrastructure. These are in sharp contrast to every $1 paid in property tax by residential that costs a dollar and 12 cents to supply. We need not forget the importance of agriculture to our county along with many other farms. We have been blessed to raise our sons here and are thankful for the opportunity to do so on the farm. Thank you. Any questions?
I think that 401 is definitely a problem in the language in it and needs to be addressed. And addressed several times. I appreciate your written comments here with the numbers, it's going to be helpful for us if we go through and critique as well. Phil? Uh, this?
Do you need to?
One, two, three, four. Yes.
I'm sorry, I lost going at 500 and I'm missing the main question, section 500.
We'd like clarification on paragraph that begins, or more animals for food or fur or recreation. I think we were just asking that question because, you know, the break of, like dairy animals is 250 mature head. Does this, or more, is, is it so that 200, up to 250?
Okay.
Or up to 250 is basically pretty much non-CFO or type thing?
Up to 249, yeah.
To 249, okay.
I was trying to find the 500 in here and that's the whole question.
That's all, sorry. If I took, passed my five minutes, I apologize.
No.
Thank you.
Kim Churchman? You're being allowed some time of Chuck McPeters?
I'm Kim Churchman, I live at 415 South Short Corner Road in Pekin. My husband and I have lived there about 20 years now and just recently purchased a farm that's been in his family's generation. He is the fifth generation farmer that Mr. McPeters tells me he's the third generation. And Ms. Purley is a several generation farmer as well. On behalf of us, we have concerns that this zoning ordinance really is meant to delay our farm's progresses. I also have a note from Kent Peter, who is my production supervisor from Barbest Foods. He is, Barbest is the turkey company that is building in the county. Under the zoning ordinance, it says that the purpose is to, is intended to encourage the growth and development of the county in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And I believe this zoning ordinance does not do that. It seems it's really intended to make a hardship out of us using our land for making a living. I am not against zoning, just against this completely one-sided document. Section 700 is the only reference to residential at all. I understood that initially this target for zoning was the turkey CFOs and the splitting of large land tracts into smaller tracts for trailers, mobile homes, what have you. Doesn't seem quite fair to me. Comprehensive plan is set up to address four distinct areas for growth. That's business, industry, residential and agriculture. And only ag is described in zoning ordinance. It seems that President Aurora, you and the commission board members would want to look at all of the public comments, put them together and toss the bones out to come up with something equally fair for us all, residential and farmers and CFOs. There is a need for restrictions, but I believe we need to be fair for everyone. I also wrote down a comment on 401 non-conforming use, 60% restoration is horrendous. If a tornado comes through as it did last year, you're going to put that person probably out of business. I also question who determines whether that building is 60% loss? And what's the standard for the approval in rebuilding if that's the option? If you're a crop farmer and you build land, put a building or CFO on your land and we are going to be restricted to 200 feet from a property line, that's wasted space if any of you farm, you know that, you're not going to be able to do anything with that land and that's harmful to your farmer. I ask, will homeowners or businesses have that same requirement setback? I noted in the comprehensive plan that we are a, Washington County is a larger rural area still than it is urban. And I had heard the comment made that Washington County is the bedroom to Louisville and that just appalls me. We have a quaint county and I would like to see you guys look to keep it intact and hold our integrity together. The turkey industry as well as the chicken industry are bringing lots of income into the county as described by this gentleman from Tyson. We pay expenses into the county, lights and gas and fuel and feed. We also pay taxes that are extremely high. My personal taxes went up double last year just because I cropped farmed and I expect. My personal taxes went up double last year just because I cropped farmed and I expect will. I don't even know what the rate will be. I understand. One turkey farmer's taxes went from twenty-four hundred to eleven thousand dollars for the county. That's an eight thousand dollar increase for three buildings. I just ask again that you guys really take into consideration the whole of Washington County and not just attacking CFOs who are economically good for the county. We are instructed by Farbest to keep things in a, in a proper manner with manure management. The state requires us to have a manure management plan. We have to have water management. All of those things are concerns and they're concerns for us. Finally, what I'm gonna read is, um, some statements from Kent Peter of Farbest. He's been involved with some of the zoning, uh, meetings. Farbest does impose voluntary setbacks on its growers so that we go in knowing that we have to build a certain distance from a variety of things. He believes, Mr. Peters says, increasing the setback from a hundred feet from property lines and roads to two hundred feet increases the footprint of our three barn project from eight point oh four acres to fourteen point five acres. I would like to see it at a hundred feet because this will limit some people, but can be workable. He says the new road, property line setbacks are sticking point for section four oh one. The need for turnaround on the farm and not the county road is a good provision for all. We don't wanna cause the county, uh, drivers problems. I am good with non-conforming facilities that want to expand, need to meet the new conditions because expansion is a choice. Two hundred point two point four, impose reasonable conditions. Is this only if applying for a variance? And he asked who's reasonable? Seven oh one point two point three point two. Can a person reapply provided that they have addressed reasons and/or conditions? Finally, I'd like to thank you guys for taking time to let us speak and hopefully I have presented the position of other turkey and chicken growers tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim?
Yeah, could I, those last two points you raised, I, I'm, I'm fascinated with Phil Marshall, but not. What were those last two sections?
That would be two hundred point two point four.
And the issue raised on that? All right, I got you.
You got it? And then the second one is seven oh one point two point three point two. I think that's it on denial.
Seven oh, seven, seven oh one point two point three point two?
Yes.
What, where do you live at?
I'm sorry?
Where do you live?
On Short Corner Road in Deacon.
What water, got any in the line?
What water, Charlie?
Uh huh.
East Washington?
So, east Washington?
Mm-hmm.
Are you people having trouble getting water for these houses?
Not to my knowledge.
I heard a rumor that, that was gonna be a problem.
It could be eventually, but not yet.
I just want, does anybody else having trouble with water?
In the, in the new construction that we've had in the last couple of years, uh, no, there has not been.
I didn't know. It, I heard today that east horseville is running out. That's what, kinda.
Well, I've heard that rumor for about three years, but I, I, I think it's a rumor.
I know Posey, they said Posey is having trouble with water and east horseville's having trouble. And that's, uh, kind of a concern I had there of what's gonna happen if it is coming true. Now, I'm not trying to assert that, but I'm starting false rumors. I just wondered if it was. How much water, do you know? How much water does it take for?
Um, on a, I would say on a hot day, we have water meters that meter everything. On a hot day, full grown birds, about eighteen hundred gallons a house.
Okay. Dusty Hancock?
Yeah, I'll, I'm getting most of my questions answered right here.
Well, good, good. You don't, uh, I would, I mean, okay. David Norton?
Yeah, I'm David Norton from, uh, fifty-four thirty-four North State Road thirty-nine in Gibson Township. And, uh, I got, I know a lot of things I could pick nits at, but I'll just cut it down. I've got seven oh one point one point one permitted uses. I think you guys try to include, you know, try to catch everything. You got a pretty good list that catches a lot of stuff here. But, uh, my mother owns a machine shop that my brother works in and I don't see where that fits in here. And I know somebody else that's not here tonight that has an artisan bakery, just a small bakery that sells stuff to, uh, restaurants in Louisville. That's not directly hit here. I was gonna say fraternal lodges, but the one I was thinking about is in Little York, so that's in a residential area, so that would come under a different thing. But, uh, you know, I think a lot of people are here, worrying about CAFOs and there's probably a lot of people that don't know that they may have some kind of business. I don't know every business that people run in this county out in the agricultural parks or, I mean, there's even little towns. Well, South Boston has South Boston operating and I see that, uh, entertainment and recreational is a special exception. I'm sure they'd be grandfathered in, but what happens to special exceptions if there's damages or things, or why somebody wanted to put in something like that in another place that was outside of one of these residential areas like Louisville, you know? And I just, you know, I hope that people think about, you know, your community and things, you know, do they, how many things don't fit this list? And, um, and we're talking about retirement homes and orphanages. I think if there was something that was about residences that was a certain size or a certain occupancy, maybe why you should regulate the fact that people in the building are orphans, that that should be regulated differently, or the fact that they're old people. Why not just put a limit on the residency if that's what you, I mean, I wouldn't wanna limit the occupation on a residency, but I don't think, you know, something about the people in the residence should matter to the zoning board. So that's just something to think about. And as far as the question you asked about the different thing, you know, the question you didn't ask is, do you think that some parts are too restrictive and other parts are not restrictive enough? Because there's a lot of pages here and I doubt there's a lot of people that don't find some things okay and some not okay. So, and I expressed, you know, when I was running for office, that I thought a ordinance by the commissioners that was about CAFOs would be one thing, but why does there need to be a zoning ordinance? Because you got an ordinance that says things about churches and there's a residential section which doesn't really have anything in it yet. And, um, these things about agritourism. I know Mr. Baird is probably interested in agritourism, that that's a special thing and do we wanna limit agritourism as part of a way to address CAFOs? And I said when I was running for office that if an ordinance about the smell at your neighbor, that I think is perfectly reasonable because if you, if it stinks in your backyard and you can't stand it, you've been harmed. That's a direct harm. You have no right to harm your neighbor. Rather than regulating the size of a building or, I think the guy that is running his house, well, and it doesn't stink. And I drove, driven by lots of, uh, turkey houses and chicken houses and there's some you drive by and you don't, there's nothing objectional. And that, there's been one or two that I've driven by. It's like, I could be a mile away and it's not far enough. Now, that, that one I was thinking about, it doesn't smell like that now. Something might've been done, but I think, an, an ordinance that regulated the smell would be a better idea than an all-encompassing zoning things that opens these cans of worms. And I know that there's a problem with regulating emissions, that that's been preempted. But the amount of ammonia and other volatile organic compounds at your neighbor's house is a different thing than the amount of emissions from the facility. I mean, it's, there's certainly a relation, but if you were not trying to relate, regulate emissions.
Thank you for the thought.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for David?
Or discussion, I mean, um, the issue about specifying orphanages. Now, I've got two kids and I know they stink.
In all honesty, and again, Dave, you live here, most of us in this room have. Twenty years ago, we didn't have. This group has started with one thing, which was a starting point for our county to better ourselves. You name four or five, but there's a hundred items that's gonna have to be looked at. But we've gotta get a starting place. We've gotta work together to find a common way we can get along and our way move on. But no, it, it didn't start. We're talking about one thing here tonight. And this room is full. If you brought a nursing home in, a park, pardon, an airport, this room ain't big enough. This group couldn't handle, I couldn't handle, I'll tell you this group, couldn't handle that many questions at one time and we're trying to work out the best possi, possible solution. It's gonna take us time. And to get it right to where he's not mad and he's not mad and he's not mad, to find a common bond is what we're looking for. And all your questions can't be answered in one night in one meeting. All your questions can't be put in one set of plans at the very start. It'll be worked on, I hope, as we move on in time to better our county, to better our living and to get along with neighbors.
I think there's one thing, one thing to remember in this. As we go along with this ordinance, if it's adopted, the existing, uh, businesses and functions that are going on in their current locations are grandpa. It will have no effect on that at all. Where this comes in effect is any new and above, after the ordinance is taking an effect. This, uh, we, we've heard comments in there that you would put everything in there that as far as permitted uses except agriculture. Well, that's untrue because agriculture is put in there as a, uh, in there. But we tried to look at anything that was compatible, that was in agriculture. You made a comment about the welding shop and the, I, I see that as mechanical services, automotive and heavy equipment, those type of things. And that same verbiage in that. We tried to look at what's currently going on and what we can expect, you know, to happen, uh, in the future. We just, we're trying to not preserve, but also put parameters on that, uh, kind of an agricultural stuff.
But I think you, you raised a really interesting point. Because we've addressed this, thank you for bringing that up, on the destruction by tornado or other disaster of a CFO. And, you know, of a, a non-conforming use. And the issue is what if someone has something that's in existence that would require a special exception? What if the tornado happens to them or the heavy snowball happens to them and they want to rebuild? Is that, does that fairly represent what your question, your issue was? Did you hear me?
Yeah.
I don't see why this can't go for any non-conforming use to be able to be put in those same type of parameters as far as to be rebuilt. You know, I even made comments about CFO. What if it's a grain mill? What if it's a silo? What if it's a barn? What if it's a machine shed? You know, with those type of things.
Well, a, a special exception will require specific approval, um, to be granted and permitted to, to be undertaken. But if it already exists and gets destroyed, will it have to come before and so, you know, attempt to be rebuilt? Is that?
Yeah, I understand the argument.
I think the intent was that it would be a non-conforming use, fall into the same control and we're gonna rewrite the non-conforming use.
Right. We have one more for public comment. Water for Lee?
I think I pass.
Okay, you're gonna pass? All right. Are there any more comments that's not listed up here on there? I know there was some people kind of being late. I wanna give them the opportunity in the back. If there is any more.
Yeah, a question.
All right.
On page nine, or non-conforming building or structures?
Excuse me, what's your name?
Eugene Churchman. Does it mean that, uh, if your fence was destroyed, you'd have to get approved to build another fence? Or if you wanted to build a fence, to fence in some cattle, that you'd have to get approved for that?
I don't see that.
Oh, I saw.
Yeah, I don't believe you. I don't think that is the intent at all. Okay, then you're talking about seven hundred oh one?
Well, yeah, it's on page nine.
Okay. All right. We got, uh, that's gonna match up with non-page two.
I cut it off the internet, uh, page nine.
I think it's the internet.
Section numbers. Five hundred?
Yeah, section five hundred.
Well, the question is on the definition of non-conforming building or structure. It's a, classified as a building, structure, fence, or other improvement or portion, therefore lawfully existing at the time this ordinance became effective. So you're asking if you have a fence that is a non-conforming use being by, you know, by this ordinance, whether you can rebuild it? I'd say if the fence was already there before this ordinance, you can only build it.
Now, what about a new fence? Say you wanted to build a new fence on your property for some cattle or something?
For the same purpose?
Yeah.
As far as keeping, I don't see that that would keep you from doing that. You know, I don't think that was the intent of that to your regulations.
No, there's no.
There, there's no regulations regarding fences in this ordinance. When we adopt an ordinance, there's certain requirements under the law, like you gotta attach them at. You got, so we kinda set the, the framework for the overall structure. You gotta divide the county into zones. So we adopted two zones. And the only restrictions, there's no restrictions as you read through here about fences or anything like that. There's, there's no zoning regulations regarding fences. There may be legal laws and statutes that apply. But we went ahead and set forth a general definitions section as part of the overall comprehensive zoning ordinance. So don't read something into the definitions, don't read a regulation into the definitions. That's just a definition for future use so that the, these are commonly used zoning terms.
There could be fences within the building too, you know? We don't wanna keep you from putting fences back into existing buildings in there. But it is, it, it's just more of a definition. It is, it, it's just more of a definition, but as far as that, the fences, it's not in the ordinance itself. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay. Okay, are there any more public comments in there?
I have one.
Okay, Carrie?
This is sort of, I mean, it is a public comment, but it's really more of an explanation on, I put up the special exception language. I know you guys can't see it on the, the board here, but it's the section six hundred. And really, the main thing I wanted to get across to everybody is that there was a lot of talk about what was a permitted use and what needed a special exception in the ag district. And a special exception basically just means you have to come before the board. And the board has to look at your particular set of circumstances using these five items. They have to make sure that it's got adequate utilities and access roads, that the establishment won't endanger public health, safety, or morals, adequate management taken to provide ingress and egress, so that you're not turning semis around on the county road, things like that. And that will not impede the normal and orderly development of improvement of surrounding properties. It should also preserve the purpose of this ordinance. So, for example, if you, if somewhere in the ordinance, it prohibits the taming of wild lions, okay? Then you can't come to the board for a special exception to tame wild lions because it's specifically prohibited. That's what that law means. There are a lot of counties across the state of Indiana that have no permitted uses in their district, that everything you do has to go through the special exception process. It is, yes, it's an extra step, but it is by no means a nail in the coffin of any of those things that are listed as a special exception option. So, for example, I know specifically one of the things that was discussed in the subcommittee meeting was a, it was basically like a tourist attraction. Well, the board wanted an opportunity to look at that tourist attraction simply because we knew this is a strong ag county. And they wanted an opportunity to look at that tourist attraction and make sure that they weren't putting a tourist attraction in the middle of, you know, CFO alley or whatever. It, all they wanted was an opportunity to make sure that it fit with where it was going. Same concept of not wanting to put a slaughterhouse in the middle of a subdivision. You know, that's all this serves. So I just wanna make sure that I understood, a special exception does not mean it's not permitted. It just means you need to come before the board and talk to them and make sure it fits with the overall plan of the community.
All right. Any more comments, yes?
Yeah, David Neil. Uh, I'd like you to address the grandfather clause.
Okay.
I've got some neighbors that had chicken houses that are no longer in use. Does this automatically mean they can rework those or, or what?
It was, I don't know if it was a pass draft or not, you know, if it isn't here by the grandfather. I thought there was a certain, if they had been abandoned for so many, so much time, that they were not classified as an ongoing operation. I know that was in some other draft language of what being made to build here.
I think I read three years, David.
Three years. To me, people are gonna have to be served. I, I don't, there's too many things, it's not, Travis or building, but are kind of... There's so many differences between ag and residential. And I don't, I, I think they overlap each other and it's making it more confusing.
And I think the issue also is, we're talking about a subdivision control ordinance? Or are we talking about something else?
I think we're dealing with rural residents.
Yeah, rural residents.
Rural residents.
How does that work when we have an R one and an A one? Wouldn't there be residential ordinance only for those areas? And I think what we're concerned about are residences in A one.
Right. I think residence R one was identified by our maps, you know, within the area. Even the green block areas were classified as R one.
But I think what we're concerned about is residences in A one.
Right.
You mean what? You say we, you, that's the issue?
Yeah, that's what, what I think is what's being said to us, is that R one, we can make a ordinance for that, but what about the residences that are found in A one?
Question. You want Glenn, A one and R one? Being an urban here is coming in late, and now you're throwing a new one at me, and I don't mind it here.
Well, it's not... We're talking about rural residents in the agricultural area.
Okay, R, that's an R one?
Are you saying you're a subdivision or are you talking about individual?
We're talking about individual, individual residents.
That is an A one, a subdivision?
A one, A one is agricultural one, agricultural layer.
Okay.
Then you've got agricultural out, but with agricultural residents.
There, there are two zones. R one, it's only has two zones.
Yeah. R one being basically the towns and the city of sounds of two mile range.
Okay, so that's...
That's R one.
R one.
So you're saying that there can be no R one outside the two mile?
There's gonna be residences.
There, there can be R, no R one, R, R one, go ahead, Carrie.
Right now, the issue is, is that if you are a, um, let's say you're building a, if you're building a CFO or a CAFO in the Y area. If you're building a CFO or a CAFO here, you have a set of regulations. If you're building a, um, what was one of the things on the special exception list? Uh, orphanage, I think was one of the examples. If you're building an orphanage in this Y area, which is A one, then you have to come before this board and use those five set of criteria that I talked about. If you're gonna build a house in this area right now, you don't have to do anything.
Right, that, that's true.
There's no, there's no restrict, there's nothing. I mean, it's just, yep, you can do it. That's, am I right that that was the, okay, did I explain it well?
Dwelling unit, home occupation is a permitted use.
And so are residences.
Right.
Nursing homes or stuff like that, it'd be a different story.
Correct. So right now, if you were, um, the, I mean, I'm just trying to think of part of the impact. So to stay away from the controversial reciprocal setback issue, just in general, when you look at that a house can go in anywhere without any restriction, and ag has a two hundred foot setback, or CFOs have a two hundred foot setback. I'm gonna, I mean, I, I feel like I'm not my, I don't feel like I'm the consultant anymore, I'm just kinda here. The, the fact of the matter is, is you've got, you can put a house anywhere in this white district, but you wanna put that house, and there's absolutely nothing to stop you from putting it right next to a CFO, and then not, and then that restricts that CFO from being able to ever expand because you built a house right next to their property line. And there's nothing that stops a residence from doing that.
Exactly.
Even if you don't do the reciprocal, there's no, they could build it, I mean, I don't think they would, but they could build it five foot from there. There's lots of safety oriented things that could happen by not having a, having the residence language in there and...
So if someone starts a subdivision?
They would have to go through the subdivision control ordinance, right, Travis?
And is that gonna be a, A one? Where's that?
The cars in the A area zone.
Yes, they could do that anywhere, but they would have to go through the subdivision control ordinance.
But if somebody once in a while has started a subdivision, or starts a road, and there's a, a turkey house sitting there?
They would just have the subdivision control ordinance.
So then Travis would stop that moving on into that position?
No. They would just have to follow the subdivision control ordinance, which says things like, the lots have, I'm assuming, and I, cause I don't remember it verbatim, but basically lots can only be so big or so small. They have to have access, I mean, these are all the kinds of things that are in subdivision control ordinance.
My concern is...
I mean, I don't, I'm not asking to do anything, I'm just trying to clear.
I know, and I know it's a political hot potato, but as we brought it out initially, without the reciprocal setbacks, this only is protection only to residences. There is no protection on the agricultural industry to go ahead and operate as in, in their agricultural district. Cause if somebody wanted to, they could come within that setback. There's nothing that allows them, that keeps them from doing that. So if they wanted to build a subdivision up against the fence, even though there is a two hundred foot setback from the property line, there's nothing that keeps that from happening.
That's the way it's written, you're right. I will say, for what it's worth, I do think that it does offer CFOs and CAFOs some protection that there is an ordinance, because it gives you one more thing to point to, that you're, it's one more goal you're meeting. It's one more criteria that you've shown you've met. I know it's not a lot, but I don't think it's, I don't personally feel like it's enough.
Yeah.
I mean, I wish there was some residents language in there, but there's not. And there wasn't, honestly, there wasn't budget for that. So even if we, we could wish all day and...
Well, I think it's a weak point, that there's not residents in there.
Uh, the two hundred foot setback keeps getting thrown around like that's already written in stone. Is that the case? I mean, that, that's just, it's the way it's been in the meeting, everybody keeps saying two hundred feet, two hundred feet, two hundred feet, like that's already a done deal.
Common language right now.
Well, I know, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that...
That's not been the point contention.
The point contention's been the residential four hundred foot, so...
But I mean, it's been said many times by different people, the two hundred foot setback for CAFOs, and, I mean, we're hoping that's not something that's already predetermined by the board that that's gonna happen.
Only a number being used tonight as a, as a reference point.
And, and there's, other than tonight, there's never been a suggest, you know, an, an argument about that. The argument has always been about, should there be reciprocal setback? Should we have a point system? Should it be four hundred feet? Should it be twelve hundred fifty feet? Should it be seven hundred fifty feet? All from residences. The two hundred foot property line setback came about, I think, as a potential compromise on the reciprocal setback idea, that, look, if we at least have, you know, two hundred feet and from a property line, then that provides some protection to farmer, because then at least their neighbor can't get closer than two hundred and five feet from them. If there's not gonna be reciprocal setback.
Question for you, how many feet do you want it to be?
I mean, one hundred feet is the, the standard. One hundred feet is the, the standard right now from a, a property line, right now. I mean, there's no, there's no need to, to really change that. I mean, a hundred feet is a, is a major diss, and most of the, the people that build nowadays don't, don't kinda build any closer than that. I mean, that, that, that's a good number, it's in use, it's, it's the, the standard, and has been for years, I don't see any need to change it.
Do you think the two hundred feet on a road right away does a good distance?
No, no, cause that, that restricts a lot of people. If, if it was, that ordinance was passed today and I went back to build my farm, and I've invested a million dollars and I couldn't build that farm at all, just because of that one setback distance, I would not be allowed to build my farm. And that, that farm feeds my family, that's, that's our way of life.
Do you, do you have turnaround, uh, turnaround?
Yes.
So you have provisions inside of your farmstead for semi-turnaround?
Yes, that's built into the, the specs for, for Tyson, all that's, you know, there's a, there's a map, a set distance on everything. When it comes to building a poultry farm, all that's taken into consideration, and, and there's no deviation from the size. There has to be that turnaround available at the farm for, for...
Just to share with you a piece of information, at last month's meeting, we had a Jill in here, he's not here tonight, but he was here one month ago, and he said a suitable distance would be three thousand nine hundred and sixty feet from the residence.
And I would like to be a millionaire too.
Okay. The board?
We could probably, um, that two hundred foot number isn't set in stone, but we could probably expand on some definitions of that to protect farms from residential development around them after their construction date.
Carrie?
Right now, the way it's written right now...
No, I meant, we could, we could expand on that to put some protections in to keep encroaching residential development from restricting the expansion of existing farms, as long as they met whatever the setback distance was set in the ordinance.
Yeah, the, the problem with, part of, and part of the reason that the reciprocal concept sort of died was there was no way, I mean, if you're gonna build a house, you know, anywhere in the Y area, you don't have to go talk to Travis. And so if you don't really have to go talk to him, other than, you know, construction design, make sure that, that you don't have any, because there's nothing in it, there was no way to force them to stay any further away, because there was no...
Well, I'm, I'm not really proposing making the residences stay further away, I'm, I'm proposing protecting the farm.
Well, but that's the thing.
If, if they're, if, if somebody builds a farm, CFOs, and it's two hundred feet, say, from the property line, and somebody builds a house five feet from their side of the property line, then I think the farm should have protection on future development in that instance. Rather than having to meet the four hundred foot setback. If somebody deliberately builds a residence two hundred and five feet from an existing CFO, then the CFO should be protected in some way in the ordinance.
Are you saying property line? Are you saying building to building?
Both.
Both, both in that example. I'm just looking ahead a little bit, cause that's a concern of, of multiple people here in the audience, and it's something we didn't address because we didn't do anything about residential.
Right.
But it's something we could...
Okay, Cam, you have a question?
I just wanted, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we are required four hundred feet from building to building, and then two hundred from the property line.
Okay.
Who is Far Best?
Far Best?
Far Best is the, uh, turkey promoter.
Yeah, I, when you say we, who's we?
Oh, I just wanted to remind you about the four hundred foot building to building setback requirement.
That's an idea, that's an idea of regulation.
To residents.
Not the two hundred, the two hundred.
Two hundred, no.
I just wanted to...
Okay, that's what I'm asking her, she says, I wonder, mind you, the two hundred, we're required to do two hundred, I'm saying it was four.
But the, the ordinance right here under seven oh one, point two, point one, and point one says four hundred feet, building to building.
And that matches the current idea of state.
I just wanted to remind you that you were talking about like the two hundred foot.
Yes, but we're talking about, we're, we're, we're talking about if you were to go ahead and build a confined feeding operation, there's nothing that keeps that residence from coming right to that property line. They gave an example of five feet away from the property line, so it's gonna put it two hundred five feet. So in instance...
Then if you wanna expand, you can, because you're not gonna be four hundred feet from them.
Right.
And what he's saying is, let's not give the resident that power, we can, if they do that, then the four hundred foot shouldn't apply.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was thinking.
All right. As far as the hour is getting close to nine, okay? And I think that we've got a lot of thoughts and questions in there. I mean, if you don't have some specific language that you would like to direct in there, what I, my recommendation is, is that we go into a second public hearing.
Should we, I'm just asking.
All right.
Should we delay the second public hearing until we can re, re-?
We have to, we have to.
Okay. All right. We want the subcommittee to go back with this?
Better than us.
Wanna have a motion to direct this back to the subcommittee and review this language? You come back with it? Jeff Satter's made a motion to break this back. Scott Monahan seconded it, it's open for discussion. I think this is the only way that we go out there to be prudent with our time and to take these comments to, in there, so that we can develop the document and present it out and go through the process of putting the new document out.
So who is on the subcommittee now?
All right. Jim Day, Scott Monahan, Danielle Walker, Brian Pride Burger?
That's it?
No, Scott.
Well...
That's great.
Yeah. Four of us.
So, and then direct your inquiries to those five people, and your suggestions and some questions.
Eric Stevens.
Eric Stevens.
Yeah, Eric Stevens.
Is David Gavretz on there, too?
Can you hear Joe up?
Can you hear Joe up? All right. So we're gonna direct that committee to go ahead and set aside time and meet before our next April meeting. Who wants to be chair?
Danielle?
Danielle? Danielle Walker will chair. She'll have her meeting, Dave. All right. That's the order of business. We'll take a couple minutes.
Can the board make recommendations to go to the subcommittee? I mean, individual concerns, to, to kinda maybe more focus the language you're trying to come out with?
Oh, I think...
I think anybody should.
Yes.
Well, I, I mean, so if we come back and we don't have the...
Three, nine, three, nine, three, four more times.
Trying to get something closer to one.
And that's why I was being serious about those five or six individuals. If you would make yourselves available with your email or phone number or something.
All right. So the motion on, on the floor is to let the subcommittee to, to tackle this project, Danielle Walker being the chair of that. We've had a motion, a second, closed discussion, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But all against, same. Motion carried. Okay. Any other business needs to be brought before this planning commission at this time? If not, all entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, Don Marshall, question?
On, on to a bold, of two-hundred foot, two-hundred foot, building to building.
Residents to building.
Yeah.
Comments to building. Anything with a nurse door to the resident, that's, that's the message.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right.
All right. That doesn't mean woodshed, no, that has to be a resident. And that being woodshed.
Four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet, how much goes in first? Residence is there first.
It's on the nurse door. It's, it's not on the four-hundred feet.
Yes.
But on the building itself, or over there.
There's no limits within them, within their poultry, poultry building. It's just from poultry to residence. Or CFO, CFO to residence. Right. Right. He's gotta be three hundred feet away from that residence. I mean, four hundred, four hundred feet. It don't matter if there's a road in between us. Doesn't matter if there's a stream, it's gotta be four hundred feet. The only way that it does differ is if, if the person who puts a CFO or CFO, if that's their residence.
The Y is a non, like, if this person owns his property, right now, he puts that, and I think Max Green gives it a pretty good, if he come back, his son, where he's living on the home down here, thirty feet away on his property. Is that not infringing upon this man's rights?
Well, that's on the reciprocal, and they... We're not giving, right now, it doesn't keep a resident from not doing. Right now, that doesn't stop. All right. Motion? We got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the adjourn? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?